All right, we will call Committee of the Whole to order. So first, I'll move to approve the minutes of the July 21 Committee of the Whole meeting without the necessity of reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes. Okay, so we have three items on the docket tonight, all related. And one is the ordinance for the purchase and sale agreement, and the other is for the TIF, the Tax Increment Financing, and then the communication explaining the TIF, essentially. First, I'll head to Director Byington. Do you, I think you have some slides for us?
Yes, thank you, President, President, Kepel and members of council. So for tonight, this presentation's going to cover both of the ordinances that are before you. The first authorizes the transfer of title to the downtown development site, currently comprised of the parcels on the screen. There's three parcels now, it has been replatted. And the second ordinance is regarding the establishment of an urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund and authorization of a service payment agreement with Bell Ave LLC. Just recapping a little, as you recall, council approved the planned development for the old hospital site in December by way of ordinance 202024. The plan includes approximately 25,000 square feet of new commercial or retail space, renovation of the Curtis block, 298 apartments, a 567-space parking garage, public plaza, and two public park spaces. Also in December, council approved ordinance 21-2024, which authorized execution of the development agreement. Key items in that development agreement included completion of the approval, getting the planned development approved, 20% of the apartments to be deemed affordable, public access retained for the plaza, pocket, and linear parks, and pedestrian and vehicular access, cooperation in regard to the public, public art and sustainability, participation by MBE, Female Women Business Enterprises, DBA, and SBA, providing commercially reasonable efforts to work with the Cleveland building and construction trades, commercially reasonable efforts to utilize prevailing wage, public parking garage to be completed with 100 public spaces and 75 spaces for the clinic. It outlined timeline requirements and utilization of a 15-year residential CRA, a non-school TIF, an 85% TIF, and a 100% TIF. The 85 is for the commercial and 100% is on the parking garage. Along with the approval of the development plan and the development agreement, a school compensation agreement was approved and has been executed by the school at this time. Key items in that school compensation agreement included sharing of income taxes during the construction period, 15-year CRA, and a non-school TIF on the apartments, 85% TIF on the commercial, 100% TIF on the parking garage, sharing by thirds any excess revenue generated on the TIF, collection of new levies, and 50% share on all permanent income tax generated. So the first ordinance before you tonight is proposed ordinance 24-2025. This would authorize a transfer of the title to Bell Ave Partners LLC. The sale price is 1.5 million. That price is, that amount is due 30 days after the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy for building A. However, forgiveness will be given if it is determined by the city that the developer has completed the parking facility, the community space, and public parks, and that declarations or easements providing public access to the parking facility has been provided. The development agreement requires certain things prior to the conveyance of the site. Those items are the following: payment by the developer of all customary closing costs, simultaneous closing for commercial loans to finance the commercial and retail components, and the first building of the residential component. This has been agreed upon, and execution is imminent. An operations and maintenance plan for the community space in a form acceptable to the city, which we have agreed on. The developer has completed the necessary rezoning and lot splits for consolidation, which has occurred. Recording of easements or declarations necessary to establish public benefits related to the parking facility, community space, and public parks. The easements have been recorded, and the declaration has been agreed upon and will be recorded soon. And then approval from the Planning Commission and the Architectural Board of Review, which has, has occurred. The next ordinance is in regard to the TIF agreement. Ordinance 25-2025 declares that 100% of the improvement to the property is for a public purpose. It provides for the creation of the TIF, and the purpose of a TIF is to provide subsidy for the development, which will include the public parking, public plaza, and public parks. The term is 100% for 30 years. Residential component will be a non-school TIF and subject to the school compensation agreement. The school will receive payments for the commercial retail component of the project equal to 15% of what they would without the TIF in place. The service payment agreement is an exhibit to the TIF. This outlines the logistics of the service payments, payments which is payments in lieu of taxes. Regarding the agreed-upon terms, when the exemption begins and how and when they are paid, the developer will pay the amount equal to what the taxes would have been without the TIF to the county, who will then pay the city that amount. The city will deposit that into the TIF fund, and then make payments to the developer and to the school as agreed upon. Just to clarify, the TIF does not include the seven townhomes proposed. And then lastly, although you've all seen the, the school compensation agreement previously, just to clarify, that has been executed. The development agreement requires it to be, to be executed prior to the establishment of the TIF. It was dated December 16th, and the estimated pilots projected at this time are just under 60 million, and the school share being just over 22 million, and then the project share being approximately 37.5 million. So that's a recap of how we got here, and then the two ordinances that are before you today. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
Thank you. And before I open to questions, do you want to introduce the guests that are with you in case any council members haven't had the pleasure yet?
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
This is Rob McCarthy with Bricker Grayden, and Ken Kalencheck with PMC. And then Brent Sobchak is out in the audience to answer any questions as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we know for the record for anyone tuning in or new council members. I'll open it up, council members, questions. Vice President Baker.
Yes, and I'd just like to clarify for the record, we did this back in December as well, but I work in my day job for a property tax funded organization, so out on abundance of caution, I will abstain from discussions and voting on the TIF. What I am curious about more high-level project-related is if we could get a timeline for administration or Casto as the kind of, when we can expect things to start moving, phase one, phase two. I think the public is very interested in that, so I think that, not related to the TIF, just related to the project, when we can start seeing some things happen. Thank you.
Through you, President Kepel. We have been discussing the timeline, but I'm going to allow Mr. Sobchak to communicate that to you. Thank you.
Timeline-wise, I would say the short answer is we're probably 45 days from putting a shovel in ground. That's the goal. Trying to push everyone towards a closing, getting all the documents together is really where we're at in the stage, so kind of lender, more lender council and lender-driven at this point, we're pushing, but I would say we're probably 45 days out, plus minus.
You want to talk about phasing a little bit?
Phasing, we're basically, it's one project. We're going to work from the front to the back. Garage is going to be kind of going on simultaneous as building one. Building four, which sits in the, on the rear of the site, is going to primarily serve as staging, and so we'll just build from Detroit back down.
And how long do you estimate once you begin?
We've got about a 26-month construction timeline right now.
And is the 45 days, like, once this is passed, 45 days from then, or 45 days from today?
I'd say 45 days from today.
Okay.
So we've got loan documents going, lender's councils reviewing all of the TIF documents, and we've got all the declarations that'll need to get reviewed and commented on, so that's my estimation on how long it'll take us to get to a closing.
Thank you. Other questions from council members? Councilman Bullock?
Thanks, Madam Chair. So the action, first of all, thanks for calling the meetings tonight. Secondly, the action before us is to hear an update and consider, or have a second reading, but not necessarily vote.
Right, so we're, this is Committee of the Whole, so we're reviewing this with, part of the reason we're doing this, taking time out of our recesses so that we can stay on track, because I think we're all anxious to, presuming that this passes successfully out of council, we would be anxious to get progress and shovels in the ground as soon as we can, so that allows us to, we're on second reading. If we refer this, the action tonight would be potentially to refer out of committee back to full council, so then it would be ready for next full council meeting.
Tonight, yeah, okay. And I'm going to have to excuse myself in 15 minutes, apologies, because I got a family thing, but the, I'm glad, so the legislation before us tonight is the middle of a long story of many years of effort, so I think what is likely for council to consider is to understand the process, hearing any changes or tweaks or refinements, and then to keep it moving forward, because to cancel these proposed pieces of legislation would be to blow up the whole development and start from scratch, which I don't think would be constructive. I do, since Brent, you're here, I would love to get you to directly address, on behalf of some of the Lakewood residents who are here tonight, why the TIF, could you do the project without the TIF? Is it, is it fair? Does your company have its own skin in the game and equity? Just as we're doing our due diligence to tell the public with a straight face, since property taxes are increasing because the spike in property value, so people are feeling the pinch out there. If you, if you could speak your best to that question, that'd be great.
Yeah, sure. I think the TIF is absolutely necessary to make the project work. As far as skin in the game, we'll have 30 million into the project. We've actually had some recent challenges with the financing, and if it wasn't for the TIF vehicle, it, the project wouldn't get done. Is it fair? I think it's very comparable and fair to other projects of this magnitude around the state, and other projects we've done and structured, so yes.
Okay, and so the, I think what you're saying is that the stability, or the full faith and credit conveyed to the project by the city being willing to consider and extend that form of financing helps
100%.
With the bank financing as well. You know, I've been saying that without, so two, two big picture points. You know, I know Councilman Evans may have some points to make about the importance of the sharing of the tax proceeds and the fee proceeds with the school district, which has got some difficulties that it's trying to get ahead of, but, you know, we've, we've put a lot of requirements upon this development. We haven't put out an RFP or a sale for anything. We've said we would like specific things and specific performances, so that adds complication and cost. I, I think that's fair to say, and that without, without that assistance, the development would still be possible, but it would be at a, it wouldn't be 299 units, correct? It would be something less dense, and less economically impactful, and less off-street parking. Is that accurate?
I think less requirements, yes, could have changed and impacted the plan, if that was the direction of the question.
Well, what I'm, what I'm driving at, and I'll conclude my remarks, is that the city had a clear opinion about the kinds of things we wanted to see
Correct.
From the development, for our downtown, for the housing market, for, for many other
Yes, that will be in the first 14 to 16 months of the project. You'll see that ground floor of Building One and the Curtis Block come into shape where they're leasable spaces. The garage will be in that first 12 to 14 months. So in theory, we can identify a tenant that could start building out their space, and the garage will be available for the public or patrons of the retail space or Curtis Block at that time.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Evans.
Thanks. I think you just answered part of my question, but I was talking about phasing of tenement yet. So it sounds like the retail will come online before the project's totally done. Is that true for residential as well?
Just the nature of building that building, retail on the bottom and going up, I'd say we probably won't, we have to work with the building department on how we turn units. Sometimes we've done it by floor, or sometimes you do the whole building. I would think that first Building One, you're probably 18 months out from, from starting.
But it will be phased, so that's it.
It's, it's sequenced, because we can't have all of it going
Right.
at the same time.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Stiner.
Thank you, President Kepel. So can we talk a little bit about the affordability factor and what, so 20% has to be affordable. What is that definition that you're using? Do we know what those numbers will be as far as what the portable housing costs will be versus the general timeline of what, what is going to be the pricing of the rest of the units?
We're using the Lakewood CRA requirements
Okay.
of the affordability. If memory serves correct, it's 10% at 80% AMI and 10% at 120. As far as pricing of those units, I truthfully did not look at it before I left, and I can't remember what the, what those rents would be at this time. So I can, that's something we can email over.
Yeah, that would be great if you could follow up with that. That would be, I would appreciate that. And then along that same line, I see that there'll be seven units that would be for single-family homes.
Correct.
Do we know what type of pricing we're looking at for that?
We do not.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Right. There are questions from council members? Okay. So, thank you. I had a question about the, the forgiveness on the purchase agreement. So it says 30 days after occupancy. That's occupancy of the entire site? Or how does that work?
Let me double-check that. I
And then it, I noticed, because it said also upon, 30 days after occupancy, as long as the parking garage, the public park, the public spaces essentially were also completed.
The forgiveness.
The forgiveness, right.
The forgiveness is after that. It's completed and accepted by, by the city, determined to be acceptable. But I, I need to double-check if the due 30 days is
It turns red. It's the opposite of what you think.
Oh, sorry.
That one turns green, but that one turns red.
If I may, I'm just referring to the purchase agreement attached to the legislation, and the forgiveness occurs upon substantial completion by the buyer of the parking facility, community space, and public parks. So all the public assets that are being financed.
And that's forgiveness of, of the principal and the interest, both? Okay.
That's correct. And this is all consistent with the development agreement. I think there was a question about what had changed. That has not changed.
Okay. And is there anything that leads into the next question? Is there anything that has changed, whether major or minor, since we had more detailed conversation about the development agreement? No? I think that's all of my questions. Councilmembers, any other questions? No? Okay. All right. This has been a long road to get to the, oh, oh, Councilmember Book.
Just one, you know, thank you, Madam President or Chair. The communication is good. There's going to be many other questions and details and changes. I thought of a bunch of questions, but then thought, you know, it's going to evolve in the next 24 months. So maybe what we could do is develop a, a habit of getting council members, you know, regular updates at whatever interval that makes sense, is that every six weeks, or four weeks, or eight weeks. But, you know, as there are helpful informational developments, you know, you, you plan Building One to be done at a certain time, or to be occupied at a certain time, but it turns out it's going to be different. So we just do these regular check-ins, and we don't necessarily have to always do it in a formal meeting, but maybe through the planning director or whomever in the mayor's office or something, we could just keep in regular communication. Because I, first of all, I think it's, it's helpful to answer questions. Second of all, it's, it's exciting to see some forward progress as well. I mean, people are still asking me, are we ever going to do anything with a pit? Can't we put football fields in there? That was my, one of my kids, actually, wants, wants the football field plan. So I said, no, we took, you know, there's an agreement and a plan approved last Christmas, you know, but people don't know it until they see a yellow tractor out there. So, so we're going to be kind of explaining a lot, and that's okay, and that's actually a good thing, I think. But if we can keep that information flow going as a habit, that'll be very helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, and on that note, we'll be, so 45 days from now is sort of the end of September? Is that where we're looking? So?
Yeah, I think October 1 is mid-September, and October 1 is, is the goal. Throw in a holiday.
Awesome. It'd be warm enough for us all to be out there with our hard hats
For sure.
and do some ceremonial shoveling, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, great. I'll just add a little bit to, I know, as we've talked about with the tax increment financing, and we've gone through this a lot, and there's been a lot of detail in the agreement with the schools. And I think, you know, one of the things that's important to keep in mind is that this property has never really generated any property tax. As a hospital, now it's a empty site. And so we're taking something that is essentially not generating funds or costing us money to sit there and maintain a vacant lot, and we'll be adding value as well as, both in taxes, as well as in value to the community with the public spaces, the public restrooms, the green space, the, and then, of course, the added tax revenue from, from the property. So it's been, it's been a long road. We've gone through a lot of iterations, but happy to see us keep moving forward. So with that, I will make a motion to refer ordinance 24-2025 favorably back to full council.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
And then I will move to refer ordinance 25-2025 favorably out of committee to full council.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Abstain.
All right. And with that, we have no further business to come before council. Did we have anyone signed in to speak? I don't see anybody, anything. But, no. Okay. All right. With that, no further business to come before council. We are adjourned.